All right, it's six o'clock. We want to welcome everybody here. We will call the October twenty-seventh school board meeting to order. We'll stand and we'll recite the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trevor, we'll ask you to call the hall.
Christina Meschman. Kirk Flickinger.
Here.
I'm here. David Kaufman.
Here.
Don Lehman.
Here.
John Payne.
Here.
Brian Tapi.
Here.
Jessica McFarlane.
Here.
Gretchen Thomas.
Here.
And Scott Rumer.
Here.
Okay. At this time, the Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing regarding the tentative contractual agreement between the Wani Community School Board of Trustees and the Wani Education Association. The purpose of this hearing is to provide public notice that the parties have reached a tentative agreement covering the period from July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. During this meeting, the Board will receive comments from the public regarding the tentative agreement. This is an opportunity for members of the public to express either support for or objections to the proposed agreement. At this time, we will open the public floor for public comment. Okay. Hearing no further comments, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please let the record reflect that the public hearing on the tentative contractual agreement has been held. And we will move on to, we will now consider the approval of the ratification of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-seven contractual agreement between the Board of School Trustees of Wani Community Schools and the Wani Education Association. Make a motion to approve as presented. Motion by Kirk, second by Brian. Discussion. Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, do you have a special board recognition?
Yes.
Coach Cora.
All right, members of the Board, Dr. Rumer, thank you very much for having us here. This is, this was the twenty-five, or twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five math team. Last year, they, they put in a whole bunch of work and we were able to make our way to state. That was our fifth consecutive trip there. And we, we were able to earn a victory at state. And not just earn a victory, but they, they got a perfect score, which is something that I've not yet seen done within a math team before. And to be able to celebrate them here, we have their state championship rings. On that state championship ring, along with all the normal stuff that it has for a state championship ring, it also says perfect score on it. To kind of commemorate that, and all of the time and the dedication that they put in. When we look at teams that are very much so led by the players, led by the members of it, I really think of this group and how much they came together, how much work they put in, how much joy they found in each other through it. And, and to see something like that, because it doesn't always guarantee that it's going to come to fruition, but to see something like that come to fruition and happen for them is phenomenal. So I'm really, really proud of them here. I do not have this in any specific order, so I'm just going to grab these out. If you all, if you'd come up here, I don't know if there are any great spot for them to go to.
Do you want to come maybe up to the front here?
Perfect, so just go to the front there, wait till everyone has theirs, then we'll all kind of open it at the same time. All right, Jack Walter. Was a senior last year, Jack, where are you at right now?
I'm at Purdue University.
Very good. Landon Huhn. Was a sophomore last year. Landon, where are you at right now?
High, Northwood High School.
Perfect. We're really happy with that for the math team. Myself. It's like your Tompos.
Alex.
Right now, perfect, also really happy with that for the math team. Luke. Was a senior last year, where are you at now?
Indian University, South Bend.
Very good. Matt Garner. Where are you at right now? Very good, also fantastic in math things. And last but not least, Julian Goerwein, was a senior last year, where are you at right now?
Purdue University.
Very good. It's an idea we got, we do have a math person that's here. All right. Could all put on one, three, one. Oh, you got them all up.
Okay, yeah.
All right, one, two, three. Do this, go pull it up.
We're ready to get a picture. Looks like parents are going to pitch up. Lost the alleyway, well, you guys need pictures.
On behalf of the Board, we would like to congratulate you guys and thank you for representing Northwood and Wani Community Schools very well. So congratulations again.
Congratulations, Kels.
Well, thanks for doing that here.
You'll never see that anymore.
Yeah, it's awesome to be able to come and brag about these kiddos here, what they've accomplished and all the time and effort, hard work they put in.
Job well done.
Do you want one more picture there, Doug?
I just want to make sure the Board's not, you guys aren't talking to them on tape. And Coach, you've got a lot of returning math athletes coming back, so expect some big things now.
For sure.
Awesome, perfect, fantastic.
Actually, we start up, our first practice is next month.
That's so nice.
We get rolling with the next season. New team, new identity, celebrate with these guys.
Big question is, they got a perfect score, could the coach get a perfect score?
Have to order.
Yeah. I like their trust. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Here's the beer. Congratulations. And the rehab surgery, what was the problem? I'm going to ride that surgery.
My solid answer is like, my solid answer is yes.
Was it suburbs? It's larger.
I'm not going to give away to you guys, you guys know what you're doing.
Is okay with Hamilton? Okay, we're going to break down for the final time. This is always, go ahead, step hands up and we can break down. So we're breaking down Hamilton, which is what we studied throughout the year, and so, okay. Ready, Hamilton, three, one, two, three. Hamilton!
Oh, it's looking good.
Do you know when that term is completed?
Uh... March, I believe, March and break. Is that right, competition on March?
Yes, because it was a conflict with prom.
Prom, yes, yeah. So that'd be April next, April next, yeah. Weston was down there.
So Jack told me that it was a question of your...
Christian's really, really, really focused on that deal. Heard Coach say, I just let me take over at that point. Good coaching right there.
He's teaching math class.
That's great.
All right, we'll get back to the agenda. And at this time, we will recognize any visitors or call of input. And I don't think anybody has picked up, so. We will move on to the amendments to the agenda. We'll defer to the consent item and then action item, sorry.
Who did? Second.
Motion by Kirk, second by John. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We'll move on to the consent items, approval of the consent items, which consists of the minutes from the October thirteenth meeting, claims, personal items, and donations. I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion by David, second by Trevor. Any comments? Hey, quick question, what's the donation for the student section for football section, what do they do?
They came in today, when I spoke with Sharon about it, we had an anonymous donor came in and made sure our student section did not purchase section tickets. Very awesome. Very generous.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Move on to action items. First action item is to consider the approval of the administrators' speech, language, pathologists, memo, counselors, and director of athletic performance contracts.
And we recommend approval as presented.
Make a motion to approve those contracts.
Second. Motion by John, second by Kirk. Any questions? Did those increase by like a certain percentage as a teacher?
Same, the greatest teacher, yep.
Hearing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We also have an additional action item that we approved earlier. That would be the renewal of liability insurance with USI.
And we recommend approval as presented. This was something I sent to you, I think, on Friday. I had several questions that Jess and I had on some of those, those rates that we got. They answered them, what we would, I guess, have expected. Any questions you guys would have, we certainly have, but answering important, we recommend approval as presented.
Motion to approve your new liability insurance with USI. Second.
Motion by Trevor, seconded by John. Any questions, concerns, comments? So what did they get? What did it, did that be an increase from last year?
Four fourteen minus three sixty-seven, so what was that? Forty-seven thousand?
I was curious if that a bigger, quite a bit bigger jump than like previous years, it felt a pretty big jump, but...
Last year it was just at twenty-seven five. I expected the increase last year compared to what other school corporations were experiencing, so this was really no surprise.
The good news is, I don't know if you guys read the email that I forwarded along to you from our, it's not really stuff that Wani Community Schools is doing, it's just more environment right now around providing insurance to, to school corporations. So that was good to hear, that things that we can control were doing well. But just another example in which things are getting more expensive and funding is going in the opposite direction, so.
I wouldn't expect a bigger difference in cyber liability insurance.
Credit to, but I don't want to say this publicly, it's what we're watching right now, but credit to Ryan Mattern on that. He has done a lot of work within our technology department to make sure that we're as secure as you can be. All the guidance that our liability insurers require of us, we follow it to a T. Just to let you grant, I think, to a lot of our staff members, when you're two-factor authenticating multiple times and things are shutting down multiple times throughout the course of the day, but it is unfortunate reality in this, this day and environment with cyber. So, you know, we were pleased to see that rate not get much higher than what it was previously.
Yeah, one mistake can cost a lot of money.
Well, there's several districts that have had some, and it is not pleasant.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay, we'll turn it over to discussion and information.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Wait, financial report for October. Really not a lot to talk about, which is a good thing. You're looking right now at the education fund, and as you can see, the balance, as you can see, the balances are made pretty well flat. Just a reminder, our state tuition is based on an estimate, which was twenty-eight hundred. We came in and we got twenty-eight twelve. So we will see a bit of an increase in our basic tuition when the state trues that up before the end of the calendar year, which is a good thing because you just approved increases across the board for teachers, and so we will see that as an additional expense between now and the end of the calendar year. The operating referendum ended up serving, again, not a lot to speak of there. Again, just like we'll move on to the operations fund. Those are all tax-supported funds, so we're not going to, we're going to see declining balances, which we're, we are, we expect that until December when we get our property tax settlement. One thing I did want to look at, and if you study these, you'll see in line sixty-one thousand, a pretty big two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar expense. And I think I brought this up before, for whatever reason, NIPSCO has one of our meters changed to quarterly, and so, and it's our biggest meter at the high school. And so that is a quarterly billing for the high school, which was about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand of that two-hundred-and-sixty-six. So that is really the only thing that sticks out in the operations fund. I did do a quick just summary of our electric expenses only. Again, NIPSCO is gas as well, but for this, I just pulled out what our electric has done over the last five years. And you can see, we've just been on a steady increase, which, just like property insurance, is another thing that's hitting our operations fund. So you can see since two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-five, the average per kilowatt has increased to just over twenty cents. So this, again, our usage has increased because we added the baseball complex and the transportation building. So we, that, to see the increase we would expect. However, if we annualize this number from two thousand and twenty-five, which is just through October, if we annualize that, that's going to be estimated right, right around eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, which obviously is the highest yet. So just another reason why we need to save as much money as we can in the operations fund. Do I go back? School lunch fund, they, this balance has been declining. As you've noticed, there's been no reimbursement from the state for our lunches. Those reimbursements have been filed, it's just a timing issue, and so we will probably see most of those hit in October and November. And then as far as our self-insurance fund, balance is very strong. We did renew our health insurance, and we really didn't see any increase except for our stop loss, which the stop loss kicks in when one person hits a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in claims for the year. So unfortunately, we did have that for a handful of people, and so our reinsurance company did up our premiums for stop loss by about nine percent. So we will see that in the coming year. And then that, that's it.
Has, have we ever considered any thought, because with those NIPSCO rates, I just said this because of the personal project I'm doing, as they keep going up, any thoughts of any solar panels or to offset our electric usage?
I know we had some conversations as a board in the past, and the board's not been over there. I think because of the location, we're the best, best spot for it. But certainly open to any thoughts and feedback that the board would have on that.
Just a thought, as, because that is only going to continue to rise, and NIPSCO, their rate increases are not going to slow down. So I just hate seeing, seeing an increased amount, I'm sure there's upfront costs. And I guess the bad news is, the federal government after this year is phasing out the tax credits, which wouldn't really apply to school corporation anyway, but there may be other grants or something. I don't know, just trying to think of a way to get, get some of those costs down again, so we're not paying out of that budget.
The project you're most familiar with, where, where have you guys been able to locate your, your panels?
Well, so I'm doing it on my house, just on the roof.
On roof, yeah. We had some discussions, because I think that would be something the community, one, it's protected up there, that, that's part of the challenge, because you can see some damage, it's just kind of out in the field in time and time. But putting one roof does appeal to me, the problem is, they do not suggest it on the flat top roofs. It's actually a great location to get it, but never to put holes in a roof. And it's a flat roof, water's going to find the lowest possible spot. And so I don't know what the parents would look on the side of the high school. I doubt that'd be something that, you know, we as a community would, would find preferable. And I don't know, you know, about the other schools who do have slant roofs at our, at Woodview and Lockwood, so that could possibly be a, be an option. But again, I'm, I'm open to feedback from the board, if that's something you guys want to dive into and, and further explore. There are a lot of companies that, even though some of the credits are phasing out, they'll, they'll still come up with a way to, to make it competitive.
Be interesting to see when they, when they come back. I mean, especially when you look at just the increase in that liability insurance, it was a teacher's salary for the year. Yeah, that's a hit.
Other thoughts, other questions?
Wind?
I'm sorry. Wind? Um, we've not explored much wind. We certainly have a really powerful wind out here, right, AJ?
Oh, yeah. I think we explored that several, several years ago, and...
Turned into...
Yeah, the cost, the cost of it, the maintenance of it, the life expectancy of replacing them didn't, didn't work. Math wasn't there. Like either of those options, just take up, if you put them on, on ground well, just take up one.
Yeah, it's too much.
To make it, well, we're, we're, you gotta take up some ground space. So that land is going to look cool.
So, yeah. I like it on a roof. But again, I want to make sure, it's a, I say our community has pretty high standards of the way they want their buildings to look, and, and, and we do as well as a district, so. You know, if we were to venture down that, it'd have to be the right situation and the right cost, and certainly we need to show a return on, on that investment.
But when you start talking about roof replacements and what is the additional cost?
Yeah.
When you get a roof replacement, the panels are there.
Yep.
So is that worth it? You just spend all the extra and once you just gain them, get a roof replacement then.
Yeah. I know part of it, like, they set it up so it's almost a lease, like you don't pay for the panels, you, you're probably much more...
You can do it that way, yeah, you can do it that way. But like with my project, sure, there's some upfront costs, but I got tired of my electric bill just going higher and higher and higher. Use a lot because my children don't listen, turn things off. But it's, it's going to equal out about a seven-year, seven-year payoff for my project. And negotiated with the solar company, they'll come out and remove the panels if I need a roof replace. So they'll, they kind of include that in their contract, like they'll take them off, hang on to them, new roof when I have that one, and then they'll reinstall them, so. As long as they're still in business. Hopefully, they're not going anywhere, they're, they're a pretty good company, they're south of Naperville.
She did sponsorship for these, uh, these board meetings.
Right. Open I L money.
If Thursday's wearing a patch on her. Thank you, Justin. Last item is just a teacher appreciation grant update in your board packet. We, we gave you everything that we submitted to our teachers and presented to our teachers. We spent the last month, Gretchen and I, doing check-ins, or monthly check-ins with staff, kind of giving them an idea of the direction of this. If you recall, teacher appreciation grant, I really wish it wasn't that name, it shouldn't be called teacher appreciation grant, because it doesn't feel anything like appreciation for all of our teachers, since the big change is now, is solely going to be awarded to only twenty percent of our teachers. As we've shared with our teachers, you know, we had to, when we unveiled our plan, we didn't expect any of our teachers to say, wow, I love the Wani plan, it's fantastic. Why? Because only one in five teachers are going to get it. No one's going to say that. And so what we really tried to help them wrap their minds around is that, you know, this new stipend opportunity that we're going to be unveiling, we want you to look at the process and say, it's fair. You know, maybe you don't love it, but at least the process is a fair process, it's transparent, and it's, there's a system to it, and, you know, we're going to be very purposeful in the way we go about it, as least subjective as we possibly can be. And so, you know, our vision for it was being a high-performing district, having a lot of outstanding teachers, far more than just twenty percent of our teachers are outstanding. We didn't think we could really objectively say, these teachers are hands down the best in the classroom, whereas these teachers are amazing in classroom, but they're not our top twenty percent. So really where we focused in was on the leadership aspect, you know, which teachers, through their leadership responsibilities, oftentimes that they take on without any pay, they do it voluntarily. Those teachers that do so much of the outside-of-the-job leadership responsibilities, the work that they do not only impacts the one... the work that they do not only impacts the learning of their kids, but also impacts the learning of other teachers' kids as a response, as a result of their, their additional actions. So that's where we, where we honed in on this grant process. It's been out to teachers. I'd say the first few days, we got a lot of questions about possibly adding some additional leadership responsibilities. And it was, there were some good feedback we missed, like in-class, where we piloted, there's some group teachers that piloted in-class for the first time last year. And now it is our formative assessment at the grade K through two level. So just some great suggestions that we got back from teachers, and we slowly started adding some additional leadership responsibilities so that, you know, again, those folks that did that work could, could be recognized. And now we're at the application stage. They have until the Tuesday before we go on Thanksgiving break to hand in their applications. And then we're gonna spend the next few weeks as an admin team, they, each one of the building principals, Gretchen and myself, making the final selection. Big question we get asked every time, is it twenty percent across the district? Or is it twenty percent for a building? We decided to go twenty percent for each building so there wasn't that feeling of competitiveness in and amongst schools. And again, we wanted each building to have a good representation of leadership within the buildings. Another piece that this really kind of fell in line with it was, you know, every year we do that end-of-year survey. And one of the areas that we don't score as well as we would like to score is one of our weaknesses, is opportunities for growth and development. And we really thought if we could leverage this as, again, giving ownership, giving capacity, pouring into our people, giving them some additional leadership-type responsibilities, so again, we can continue to grow our own people. Maybe you're still in that classroom setting, but you aspire for other leadership opportunities down the road. And so, you know, it's our hope that folks that are taking on all the voluntary responsibilities, this kind of formalizes it and gives them a title that goes along and recognizes the work that they do. What did I miss?
I'm gonna cover it.
We've done a lot about the last, the last month. But again, I think the big takeaway, this is the funding source that used to be old tag. But as we really, and teachers have said this, I just wish you didn't call it tag. And I think that when you say tag, teacher appreciation grant, you kind of see the old lens. And it really, it's, to us, it's the leadership stipend. You know, it's a building leadership stipend positions funded through tag. And so hopefully, as we continue to massage and polish off this process, I think it'll be better as we move forward. But certainly, it's, it's been some work getting it off the ground this year. But I do feel really, really good about where we landed. Again, not that I love the system, I would prefer the old system. But I've had several conversations with Dr. Jenner and David Doocy, who's in the Department of Education. We have shared our plan with them. We have gotten really, really good positive responses from the DOE. The DOE doesn't really have a great sense of how this is gonna play out in every single district. And so they're looking for models that they then can share out and say, "Hey, this is, this is one school's approach, it meets all of our criteria," you know. And so a lot of the feedback we've gotten from them has been just that, can, once we improve your plan, can we then share out with, with other sort of districts around the state? Certainly, we've done that with a lot of our colleagues, but I'd also say we're just ahead of the game right now, because we've spent a lot of time kind of thinking and working on this, knowing it was gonna be a big challenge coming this year, so... Questions?
Another question. I had, I had a conversation with a high school teacher just this afternoon who shared with me, he said, "Well, rumor has it that at Fairfield, they just put everybody's name in a hat." He said, "Well, I don't think that's exactly how this can be done." So I said, "Probably wanna maybe circle back and verify some information, because it's, it's not that easy and can't really be done that way."
So to that point, the DOE is gonna ask for a lot of reporting on this, that they wanna get down and find out how schools were rewarding the funds. And again, I won't name any, any names, but I think, and again, I understand it. I mean, it's hard. It is really, really hard, and there's no, there's no model for this. And so you have, you're creating it as you're, as you're going along. But yeah, I would not suggest that, that approach. There's some other approach that...
Yeah. So we had talked about it, and I just shared all of our discussion and how I thought we had come up with the best possible plan, given the guidance and circumstances, so...
I just wanted to say, I appreciate it. I know you guys have put so much work into this. And especially on the feedback piece of it, you know, because that's why we, all the, all the educators wanna feel heard. And so I think for them, to listen to them and put the best, it's kind of taking lemons and trying to make lemonade out of it. So really appreciate all the work you guys have put into it.
I was gonna sort of echo those same comments, just thanks for putting a model together that we feel is as fair as fair can be. So here we've got a feel from state, why this shift? Why this change? Where it came from, what, I mean, like, how does even...
I would say, folks in our state legislature, they don't necessarily think the model of education that we have in place is working. They see the private sector model, and they want to, they believe that schools need to move more in that direction. No one has flat out said this to me, but I know the author that offered this, this piece of legislation definitely feels pretty much in that camp. And so my intuition is that this is kind of that testing, that marker. Let's see how schools respond to this, to see if down the road, all compensation can venture down that pathway. I mean, you just look at, you know, changes that have happened, evolutions that have happened with collective bargaining, evaluation. And again, I'm not saying these things are all bad. I'm saying some of the changes, I think, have been really, really good. And I'm not gonna argue one way or the other that, you know, our model needs to evolve in some way, shape, or form. But I truly do believe this is a pilot program to see a more wide-scale differentiation of, hey, based upon performance, based upon area of licensure, is applicable in the public education setting.
Again, thanks for... No, thanks again. You guys were put in a tough situation, and I think you did the best that you could do.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, that's all we have this evening.
Okay, that brings us to adjournment. Anybody who'd like to make a motion? So moved? Second? Trevor, David, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thanks everybody for being here.